Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna ask if you get to your seats. We're gonna start our board meeting at this time. We will open up our St. Lucie County School Board meeting. It's our regular meeting and it is August the 14th, 2018. At this time, we welcome all of you for attending this evening. We appreciate your attendance and hope that you all had a wonderful summer and have just jumped right on board these last two days of beginning school again. At this time, would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then we will go right into our Kids at Hope Treasure Hunters' pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we recite the Treasure Hunters' pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exception. Please be seated. And we will now call our Special Order of Business. We turn this part over into Superintendent Wayne Gent's hands.
Thank you. We have several tonight and we're gonna be recognizing each of one of our high schools as well, so I wanna say welcome to the high school administrators. I see most of them, the principals that are here, and we'll get to them in just a moment. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Patrick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. This evening, it is my special privilege to kick our Special Orders of Business off with a very, very special lady who has trained very hard in order to make her way to the Special Olympics 2018 USA Games, which were held in Seattle. Leah Scheible, you may have heard her name. She is a rising junior at Fort Pierce Central High School, and she definitely made a big splash in this year's Special Olympics. As one of Florida's seven swim team members, she took twin silvers in her individual 200 freestyle event and the four-by-50 freestyle relay. And she scooped a fourth-place finish in her individual 100 freestyle event. Leah's swim coach is Heather Gray, who has been with her all the way. She was with her this evening, and she describes Scheible as an outstanding athlete. Leah participates in swim, track, basketball, and cheerleading for St. Lucie County Special Olympics. She is equally active on the Fort Pierce Central High School campus. She participates as a varsity athlete on the school's swim team and the track team. She also plays junior varsity ladies' basketball. So, as you see, she is very involved, and this is an important note. Leah is no novice when it comes to vying for medals for Special Olympic events. As a ninth grader, she also took gold in the 100-meter freestyle and silver in the 200-meter freestyle at the Special Olympics that were held here in our state. So, at this time, I would love for you to meet Leah Scheible and her coach, Ms. Heather Gray. Very good. Next, as we move through our Orders of Business, I would like to talk to you about a very special partner. And we all know that community partners in education are vital for our success, from volunteer support that we receive to the financial support that we receive. The wide array of contributions that St. Lucie Public Schools students and teachers receive from all of our partners is greatly appreciated. But to specially note this evening, it is my pleasure to bring to the podium Mrs. Sheila Cash from Garber Buick GMC, who will present St. Lucie West Centennial High School with a check for their Drive for Education fundraising event.[322.27][322.27](applause)
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Oh, no, this goes. There we go. Good evening, Madam Chair, Directors, Superintendent Gent, and ladies and gentlemen. General Motors Today has totally an original program called Buick Drive for Your Students, which the Buick dealerships partner with the community schools and host test drives to raise money for their school. I also want to point out that Buick also offers scholarships to students via the Buick Achievers Scholarship Program. Drive for Your Students program further demonstrates Buick's commitment to community and education, as well as our local investment that dealers are making in their hometown, just as we are doing here in St. Lucie County. Schools are constantly seeking dynamic opportunities to support their extracurricular activities, sports programs, and we are an integral part of our community. Buick would like to help, building off its commitment to academic achievement through the Buick Achievers Scholarship Program. Buick is pleased to announce, again, we will once be doing the Buick Drive again for your students this fall. We, as a Buick dealership, Garber Buick, has the opportunity to team up with our public school to host one day of a test drive event to raise money for their school. Buick will donate $10 for every valid test drive taken. If your event exceeds 100 test drives, Buick will double their donation to $20 per valid test drive, up to $10,000, which can be raised for the school for one single event. Seven hours, pretty easy money. Garber Buick has been doing test drive for St. Lucie County schools for two years, with four test drives, and have raised $33,100.[451.12][451.12](applause) We are proud to be partnered with the St. Lucie County School Board and Carrie Patrick, who has helped lead the drive for your student events and have this be successful. Centennial High School staff, students, really worked hard to make this event work. It was the first online registration that Buick had us do. We were kind of like a guinea pig, so to speak. The event had some little niches, such as rain, holiday, and the Wi-Fi went down. So, it was really a pleasure to work with Andrea Popwell and her team through the challenges, and I would love to present the big trophy check that she can display for a work very hard and earned.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. And while she's standing up here, if we could do a little preview, because coming this fall, Principal Joseph Lazo is going to be leading up the Drive for Education at Fort Pierce Westwood High School. So, everybody look out and be ready to take your test drive.[571.66][571.66](applause) Next, we have another organization who's been extremely supportive of St. Lucie Public Schools. The health and wellness of our students is important, and we're very proud of the continued partnership with the American Heart Association. This partnership is crucial, as today nearly one in three American kids and teens are overweight and obese. Approximately two-thirds of the children are not getting enough daily physical exercise and drinking water, is being replaced with consuming caloric beverages. The link between academic achievement and student health and wellness is well-researched, and healthy students miss fewer days, and physical activity is linked to an increase in student cognitive performance. At this time, it is my pleasure to bring Mrs. Michelle Mason from the American Heart Association, who is here this evening, to recognize three of the many schools who participated with American Heart Association, but these three in particular are the big fundraising champions.[632.82][632.82](applause)
I'm tall, so I have to push this up now. So, good evening. Thank you, guys, so much for having me. I am super excited to be here. I am the Youth Market Director for the American Heart Association, and I work with all your schools here in the county, and I couldn't be more blessed and grateful for what you do. She summed up exactly everything that I would say. The health and wellness of our students, including my own, I have two, is very important to me, and I appreciate all that you guys do and your continued support for our partnership. I'd like to recognize three amazing schools. We partnered with 15. I wanted to do something special this year. I thank you, guys, for granting me this opportunity, but recognize them for all the hard work and everything that they put in to raise money for our critical mission. The first one is Palm Point Educational Research School. Coach Santoro and Coach Piscopo, I always call them by their last name, Coach, I treat them like I'm a student still, with, sorry, Mrs. Perez. We want to recognize you and thank you for all that you do. They were our top fundraiser this year, out of all the schools that participated. You guys raised $5,731, which is pretty amazing.[717.63][717.63](applause) I have some pretty good pictures of Coach Santoro being slimed by his students. He enjoys that very much, and it's really a pleasure to get out there and to see him and how much they support the students. The next one, I've learned to find out they're pretty competitive, Morningside Elementary School. So, I'd like to thank Mrs. Melrose, Coach McKenna, and Coach Prue. I heard she made them come tonight. But they did pretty good, too.[753.94][753.94](applause) I wouldn't say pretty good, they did amazing. This is the first year that Morningside has participated in quite some time, and these two did an amazing job right off the bat, and they raised $3,912.[770.01][770.01](applause) We didn't get to do the pie in the face this year. I'll be sure to give you, guys, some dates to join us. Field Day, I guess, they got rained out, so they didn't get to do it. And the last one I am super excited about as well is Oak Hammock K-8 School with Ms. Wiggington and Coach Branham. They did fantastic.[796.23][796.23](applause) And I just wanna thank the principals for your support. These coaches do an amazing job. They promote that with their students, but I know that they couldn't do it without your support as well. So, please give them a round of applause. Together, they raised over $13,000.[812.63][812.63](applause)
Are we hiding? And next, let's talk about ANEED. How about the Morningside Team with the National Energy Education Development, otherwise known as ANEED. This school, represented by the fifth-grade group, was selected by the ANEED project as the Florida Elementary School of the Year. That's throughout the entire state of Florida, and the national elementary school runner-up. Now, what is ANEED? Well, this award is based on the work that Ms. Mc... Oh, I practiced this, and I'm gonna mess it up. That Ms. McComdav.[890.13][890.13](laughing) Okay. She and her fifth-grade class worked on a portfolio on energy studies. The fifth-grade group was highly engaged as their studies and experiments on the science and energy led them through class activities, energy expos, and community festivals. It was an amazing opportunity for students to showcase their knowledge about energy and to share this information with others to support more energy consciousness in the community. Students attended an awards recognition conference all the way in Washington, D.C. this summer, and ANEED encourages and rewards student leadership and innovation by sponsoring the youth program for energy achievement. This evening, we recognize Ms. McComdav...[933.63][933.63](noise) Did I get it right that time? Okay.[937.00][937.00](laughing) Ms. M., I love that. Mia and Charity for the work that they did. All right. You probably noticed all of these beautiful frames holding certificates that are of outstanding accomplishment. This is our Advanced Ed Accreditation. Advanced Ed is the largest community of education professionals in the world. They conduct rigorous onsite reviews of a variety of educational institutions and systems to ensure that all learners realize their full potential. Advanced Ed's expertise is grounded in more than 100 years of work in school accreditation. Using a set of rigorous, research-based standards and evidence-based criteria, an Advanced Ed Performance Accreditation Team came to St. Lucie Public Schools as we closed the school year and examined the whole institution, our policies, our programs, practices, learning conditions, and culture. They determined how well the parts work together to carry out St. Lucie Public Schools' vision to meet the needs of every learner. I am so proud to say that St. Lucie Public Schools received the very highly sought-after Advanced Ed Accreditation because we solidly met the Advanced Ed standards and accreditation policies, demonstrated quality assurance through internal and engagement reviews, and provided evidence that we do engage in continuous improvement for our students. At this time, I invite all of our school principals to come forward and receive their
No, not there. Okay, so it's gotta be over there. No, village green.
Are you taking her back, or what? It was so funny.
Finally, it's home![1156.13][1156.13](laughter)
How are you? Good. Thanks. Thanks. I've known her long enough that I can tell.
Yes. It's your podium.
It's my podium. I'm putting you on.
We're missing something.
Westgate.[1169.13][1169.13](noise)
(noise)
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 Star Awards are provided when we have nominations of our team members going above and beyond with their service. Our very first Star Award this evening is Mr. Josh Sorenson, who is in our Maintenance Department. Josh has been working... Josh has been working with the district's graduations for many years now. His knowledge of the total logistics and expectations of each ceremony is phenomenal. He also exhibits an enormous amount of care to ensure that all graduations are executed in a manner that is reflective of the best of the district. In addition, Josh takes great pride in making sure that the positive light of the district is shining bright. It has been a sheer joy to work with Josh and having him serve as the point man from Maintenance on Operation Graduation. Josh is a superstar. Congratulations. Our next Star Award is Ms. Denora Gomez from Oak Hammock K-8. She was nominated by Ms. Belkus Madira. Ms. Denora Gomez is an exceptional human being. She goes out of her way to help others in need. I have Denora...I have known Nora for the past eight years. I first met her at my school while she was a part of the PTO committee, and she always had a smile on her face and was always willing to help others with paperwork and school events. Every year, we commemorate the Holocaust Remembrance Day in the month of March, and we host a busload of Holocaust survivors from the Palm Beach area. They stay with us for the entire day. Denora single-handedly organizes our annual Holocaust Remembrance Day luncheon every year for 50 to 80 people. She reaches out to local restaurants and supermarkets and gets food and produce donations. For the past two years, she has driven to Miami to get kosher chicken to cook for our Holocaust survivors. She makes sure that the elderly people get nutritious and kosher meals. She even spends her own money to make sure that they have enough food for the day. On the day of the event, she takes the day off of work to cook and to serve for our guests. This event could not take place without Denora's hard work, commitment, and her faithfulness. There are not enough words to express my gratitude and admiration for this wonderful, caring, selfless, loving, and reliable woman. She deserves to be recognized, and so tonight, we are so happy to recognize you. And I will say, I've been at those events. You are amazing. Congratulations. And we have two individuals that were at Southport Middle School last year when they were recognized for their customer service. So I would like to invite Mrs. Christine...Pat Christian McFadden and Yasmin Schmidt up to receive their awards. They were both nominated by Ms. Martin, who was so impressed by both ladies' professionalism and helpfulness. The "do-whatever-it-takes" attitudes definitely epitomizes the expectation we have for customer service in St. Lucy Public Schools. We appreciate you going the extra mile to ensure that the needs are met, solutions are sought, and helping hands are always extended. Congratulations to you.
so appreciative for your hard work within this district. We cannot express our thankfulness as a board for your labor within the District of St. Lucy County Schools. We're gonna move right along to our CTA report. Do we have Ms. David? And welcome, as you come to the podium.
Board members, Madam Chair, Superintendent Jen, good evening. I want to take a moment to talk about three things. I'll be brief, but I think they're pretty important. First one is the new teacher symposium, and the union was lucky enough to be invited to participate in that and to work with the district on several parts of it. We did the True Colors, and I think that was very well received. We got great reviews about that, and we've actually heard good things about the whole symposium. So first of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to be part of that, and I think it's a good thing for our new teachers coming in. I think they got a lot out of it. I want to talk about the first day of school. Monday, I was lucky enough to put on the purple and gold and head over to Central to help out with the new students coming in, the old students coming in, everybody coming in really the first day of school. I was excited because I kind of miss being in a school. While I was there, it was really nice to watch really what's always going on since I've been there, but students coming in, being greeted friendly...terrible English, but with a friendly face, teachers being where they needed to be, you know, everybody being where they needed to be. It went very, very smoothly. Rebecca happened to be at FK Suite as well and reported similar thing. Everything went very, very smoothly, students where they needed to be, everything going well. We've heard that really from the whole district. And so we think that's important because it takes school administrators, teachers, staff, and really students working together to have that kind of smooth, smooth opening. Last thing I'm gonna talk about is really, I guess you could title it, "How I Spent My Summer Vacation." I was lucky enough this summer to go to, as a new union leader, go to a number of workshops and different kinds of events to really hear from other local leaders. And I have to say that we've got a really unique relationship, the district and the union here in St. Lucy County. I'm very proud of that. In all those workshops, all I heard from the other union leaders is that they're in a constant pitched battle with their district, openly hostile towards their administrators, and vice versa. We don't have that, and I'm very proud of that. So much so that I actually got to talk for a half hour one of these where I was supposed to be learning about how we do things here in St. Lucy County. They talked about how it sounds like a marriage to them. It's not that kind of relationship at all. It really isn't. If anything, it's more like siblings. I don't know about any of the others, but my sister and I really, sometimes when we were younger, felt like cats and dogs. I mean, we really didn't get along, we disagreed, but we always managed to come back and be brother and sister and work out our differences. And I think that's the kind of relationship we have here in St. Lucy County. We don't collaborate because it's easier, because it's quick, because really, it's neither. We do it because we come up with the best solutions that meet the needs of the most people. That's why when the district makes tough decisions unilaterally about cutting positions, this happened last Friday before school started, that creates issues and frictions in that relationship. Nothing that can't be overcome, but really, when the district does things with us instead of doing things to us, that's where we can look at different points of view and come up with really solutions that meet the needs of everyone. It also ultimately allows us to communicate that decision to our members in a way that makes them feel respected and understand why things are happening. So it's my hope that we continue to maintain our collaborative relationship. There's gonna be some rough spots, especially with so many new faces around the table, but things like the new teacher symposium, the first day of school, all the other things that we've done together couldn't happen if we didn't have that kind of relationship. And I guess that's all I'm gonna say. We do it because it's what's best for all of us, for the administration, for the school board, for students and teachers. Really, it's good for everyone when we do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We appreciate your report. Do we have someone here from CWA? Seeing none, we're gonna move right along with our agenda, and we will have the adoption of the consent agenda at this time. I'm calling for a motion in a second, please. So moved by Ms. Hawley, and second by, I'm sorry, Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Superintendent, may we have your recommendations?
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Sub move.
Sub move by Mr. Ingersoll, and second by Ms. Hensley. All in...oh, nope, we're not gonna go any further with that one. Do we have a comment first before we take a vote? Any comments at all on any item on the agenda? Okay, seeing that there are no comments, we will vote now. May I please have a vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We go into our superintendent and staff reports on selected topics.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the...I know we have many administrators here tonight, and I know that the second day of school, it's kind of like we're on a time warp, and we're worn out, and I appreciate you coming out this evening to receive those plaques, and we hope that you'll display them prominently at your school center. But it is a big deal when the school district is accredited, and it's really your performance and what you do at your school center with the teachers and with your staffs, and they were very impressed with what they saw in the county. So I do apologize for bringing you out on the...what's it called when you fly in a different zone?
Time zone?
Jet lag, yeah. We're kind of jet lagged from the first two days, but it's a good jet lag, and so I do appreciate them and the other administrators that have come out. Before I talk about the first couple of days of school, let's recognize our new APs. We've got them here this evening, so when I call your name, we'll have you please stand up. Let's go with Cassandra Fess, who will be the new Assistant Principal at Weatherby Elementary. Congratulations to Cassandra. Latricia Stubbs will be new AP at St. Lucy Elementary. Latricia. Renee Mottow will be at Rivers Edge Elementary. You had a chance to see her today in the back. And Mr. Jason Martin will be at Fort Pierce-Westwood High Schools. Mr. Martin here, and very in the back too. At the fan club. So we appreciate those folks. We tell them that when they become principals, they get to come up and speak, but we appreciate that, and wanted the board to see our newest team members. We have had an outstanding opening of school for the first two days, and we know it's early in the year, but we're really continuing with last year's successes and really riding that wave and that momentum. And I do, again, sincerely want to thank all of our community partners. We want to thank our law enforcement, particularly the Sheriff's Department, who's been out, and the principals, and our transportation crew. This is really...we've put a lot of time and effort in this, and I want to call out Mr. O'Leary, and I want to call out John Gillette in a positive way. I would never call anybody out in a negative way at a meeting, but for...and all of the cabinet members and the principals and administrators, it's been...since it's only the second day, I hate to compliment too much, but it's been fantastic. Our calls are down. That doesn't mean we haven't had a couple of bumps in the road, but it has really reduced from the past...from last year, and that's all we want, is to see improvement. And Mr. O'Leary and his team and the transportation crowd, we were over there. The board members, most of the three of you were there yesterday morning, I believe, at 5:00, and pushing drivers out, and they're all excited, and so it's been a good opening. As I said the other day on TV, we've got a lot of security enhancements in place in our school centers. We've got resource deputies in every one of our schools. We've got school safety specialists named for the district. Single point of entry, we're just finishing that up, was in three of the schools today that have that, just wrapping up some loose ends in those areas, the communication systems, our camera systems. We have site-based assessment teams at each school. We've done a site-based assessment through Rob Bryant and his department, who...where's Bryant at? I want to wave to Bryant too, who deserve accolades as well for what they've done this summer, working hard, new code red procedures, active shooter training, crime prevention surveys, entry doors. I know that our folks in the front office were very, very well-trained, because I was asked twice today on the...when I tried to buzz in for me to state my business, and so... That was good. That was very, very good.
What school was it?
So, I'm not telling you what school it was. No, but that meant that they're on it, and they're paying attention and protecting our kids. And as I mentioned yesterday too, what's important is, we have all those in place, but what's the most important thing, as well as security, or right equal with that, is when our boys and girls and our young people come into our schools, that they've got caring, loving adults that care about our students, that develop positive relationships from them day one, and it's...so I've said to the principal, some of the children that cry out the most for love and need it, show it in the most unloving of ways, and it's important for us to really try to meet those needs. And they do this, and it's Team St. Lucy, and so again, I want to congratulate our schools for a fantastic opening, and all the departments, Bill as well. I know I'm gonna miss some folks, but ESE, and usually each year, we have some bumps in a row with ESE and transportation. They haven't been all eliminated, but it's really been curtailed, and I say this with a knock on the table, the phone has not been ringing off the hook, and I know yours' phone hasn't been ringing either, so that's a good thing. Also want to talk about, talking about Bill and mental health, we have five new social workers in our schools. We have five new school psychologists. We have a new Department of Director of Social Emotional Learning, Tracy, and that was funded through a Title IV grant through the state, through the federal government. So we're in good shape there. We've got a Here's Comes the Bus app for the parents, and it's important that they go on the webpage if they're having concerns about transportation and knowing where the bus is, what time it's gonna be there in the morning, and where it was in the afternoon, you'll be able to look at that. Some of our community agencies have come in with donations, and I know I'm gonna miss some because there's been so many of them. Khalil Mack, who was graduated from Westwood and is a linebacker for the Oakland Raiders, I think he's still holding out, but he donated uniforms to students to Lakewood Park Elementary. Our local realtors, we've got a picture of tons of backpacks and school supplies. The United Ways for their...United Way for their school supplies, Saint Bernadette's Catholic Church, backpacks and supplies to Parkway Elementary, First United Methodist Church, Northport, where they gave Northport with books and supplies, Children's Service Council, and many other agencies. I know we've missed some, but if they get us that information, we'll recognize them. But I wanted to say a special thank you to those groups. Also, student assignment was moved to help facilitate folks in the community. They are now back over on University Boulevard by the stadium, so folks are coming in, we're back at our temporary location. Also, a couple of awards that were won for some of our staff members. I want to thank, number one, Clarissa Duskins, and we'll recognize her at the principals' meeting. She's Title III Program Manager, and she is serving now on the National Association of Bilingual Education Executive Board. She has a one-year term, and that was presented to her in March, so we want to congratulate Clarissa. I don't believe she's here this evening. Is she, Helen? Okay. She's not here. She didn't know we were gonna do that, and I don't think Marty's here either, but Marty will be the...is serving as the President of the Florida Educational Facilities Planner Association. So we want to congratulate Marty for the job he's doing right there. And so I know it's only August, but you have to fight the flu, all right? And so this is really for parents and for employees, who are partnered with healthy schools, they're gonna be offering again this year in-school flu shots in the clinics at the schools. And so the children can go onto the district's webpage, and we'll be able to...we'll get more information out to the schools, but they can go up and sign up, and so the children can have their flu shots, which we know that we can't teach the children, and they can't learn if we don't have them in school, so we'll be working on that. I then want to, again, just say thank you to this board as well. They've been out and about in the schools the last all summer long, and have been out there talking to the community members, and it takes a very, very strong board for these things to occur, and I just appreciate their support and what they're doing to support our students and our teachers and our staff members that are out there. And again, I cannot say enough positive accolades for the great culture and the great team that we have here in St. Lucy County. So again, I know you guys are out here and you're struggling to stay awake. I told the principals once we gave you your plaques, you could take off out the door. Some of them are hanging around, some of them bolted, and that's fine. But again, a job well, well done, and thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Jen. Attorney's report, Attorney Harold, do you have a report for us? Okay, so we're gonna start right on that end of the table, Ms. Hensley.
Yep, cool. We did the advanced ed years ago when we were told that we only had to certify the high schools, get accredited, the high schools need to be accredited. This school district decided it was too important to our community to not be accredited K through 12, every single school, and as a district, and we've been able to maintain that. Also, we were the first county years ago to get the OPAGA Seal of Best Practices, and that was the Office of Public Programming and Government Accountability. We were the first, and for many years, we were the only school district, and that was for transportation, fiscal management, and HR. So we did that, and it was very time-consuming, and we've been able to maintain those standards ever since. We did the Tunnels of Hope. We are the only county in the country that has a Kids at Hope philosophy as a county. We did, started the tunnels, I believe, about 12 years ago. The Children's Services Council funded that, and we started those tunnels, and I heard the other day that our businesses in our community are now doing the same thing for welcoming their staff back or new staff. So I think that has taken hold in our community, that we look at our kids and our community in a positive light, and that negates any of that other stuff we hear. Thank you.
Just wanted to thank everyone, the staff. This has been probably the only year I can remember that I didn't get calls and emails by the dozens, so everybody's doing their part. Thank you. It makes our job so much easier. And also to staff that put together some great back-to-school programs. We had one at the Met Stadium. We had enjoyed so much the Magnet School for the Art, which is now CAST, the program that they had there. There's just been endless programs we've been involved in, and it just shows the talent of all of our staff. I'm so appreciative to everyone, whether you're here or you're watching on TV, just know that you have been tasked with a monumental job of keeping every child safe every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Henson, Ms. Hawley.
Just want to say a very warm welcome back to everybody. My soul is just filled with joy as these last couple of days, walking around the different schools and seeing all the bright, smiling faces of students and staff. So I know you're all happy to have your babies back in the school with you too, and look forward to another phenomenal year. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley, Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, I want to thank you, everyone, for having a good school year, the opportunity to address transportation, the Tunnels of Hope at Weatherby, Alpeta Flats in Sam Gaines, the opportunity to speak to staffs at Rivers Edge, Central that gave me a T-shirt. Oh, no, I'm not done. I've collected more T-shirts this year than anything else. It must be because my wardrobe is lacking. I got a shirt from Longwood, and I had to bring my incredible shirt from St. Lucy Elementary, "Defying Gravity," on the rise. So I just appreciate all the opportunities to come to your schools, and like all board members, just to see how well we're doing. And it's not that we're doing it, it's everybody out there, all the teachers, professionals, administrators, bus drivers, support staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
I want to especially thank our businesses. We had one of many that came here tonight to give a check to help with one of our schools, and I just want to thank the businesses that are out there, and we have really developed a lot of partnerships out in the community, and it's an exciting thing to see us working together as a St. Lucy County family. So we want to thank you very much for your importation to the school district. Also, principals, we cannot thank you enough, and our teachers. We just recently became a very high B district, only 1.5 points away from an A. That is incredible, and since my tenure here, since 2010, that's the first time. I don't know if we ever done it in the history of St. Lucy County, but I know it's been a long time, so we want to thank you for all your hard work and your efforts. And we're now fifth in the state of Florida in graduation rates, and I am so grateful for that. That means we're reaching, and we're attempting to reach every single child, and we're not giving up on one individual child. We know that our children have to pass very strenuous state test exams, and it's not easy. So for us as the family of St. Lucy County, preparing them and working earnestly with each and every one of our children so that we can obtain the status that we've gotten to, accolades and kudos to everyone in the county for what you're doing, the school district. Primary election is coming up, and so I say this to the entire community, get out the vote. Your vote does count. We have three school board members that are gonna be on the ballot, and we need you to come out and support those that you believe in and that you want to keep on the school board. Not just us, but we have many different local races that are going on. Primary is this August. August, the early voting is August 18th through the 25th, and then we have our day of election, and this is the time to vote certain races in. So that's about it for tonight. At this time, we bid you all farewell. We know that you're ready to get that rest and get ready all over again tomorrow, so good night and have a great week.